Scott Self, I'm here. Michael York.
Yeah.
Richard Lane.
Yeah.
Brandon Self. Not here. Victoria Ames. Not here. Mark Speller.
Here.
Jane Johnson alternate.
Here.
Kristen Reynolds alternate. Stacy Goodell alternate.
Here.
I will speak Jane for Brandon and I will speak Stacy for Victoria. All right, Jane for Brandon Self and Stacy for Victoria Ames.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the, on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Uh, under public hearings, a planning board twenty-five dash zero one zero, Furlong LLC subdivision. Uh, Furlong LLC has submitted a two lot subdivision application for a lot located at Taxman two-ten Lot Four, lies in the Business District, and has approximately thirteen point three three acres. And number four, under discussions and other business, we have a site plan modification from Environmental Alternatives Incorporated, and a site plan modification from Asher Construction LLC. And number five is adjourned. So going to the head of the list here. We have the approval of the minutes, or more than I guess we ought to do, the regional impact bill.
That's what I was gonna say, that's not only our, so we got a.
Okay, so, um, is anything on our agenda tonight going to affect us surrounding town or we should notify them?
I'll make a vote there.
Okay. Motion by Michael that something on tonight's agenda would require us to, uh, alert the surrounding town, seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the same aye.
Right.
All those opposed. Okay, now we'll get to the minutes of June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Uh, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Boy, that was a tight. Okay. Motion by Richard, seconded by Jane. Is there any, uh, further discussion, any alterations or anything wrong with the minutes? Nope? Okay. All those, all set?
All set.
All those in favor, if they're saying aye, aye, all those opposed. And now we get down to our agenda, and the first thing on the agenda is the Furlong subdivision. And we've got the application in front of us here, and we've got the drawings in front of us here. I don't know, I guess either they're dimmed out or those who outside on the.
Yeah.
We're missing ones around the, around the corner. Mike, I got it. Mike, do you have, Mike, I got it, sorry.
No, I must say, I look at this numerous times. So my theory is that we need some, so. Glad to hear you are.
It was, that was, it was tough to see on the small one. Bigger one you could see it, but the small one could not pick it out.
I was looking for proposed anywhere.
Yep. So we'll get to it then. Um, are you gonna present the application or, uh, are you ready to present?
Ready, we're never, okay, there you are.
We're gonna go with the application, make sure.
Okay, good.
And then we'll vote on that, and then if that's good, then we'll vote.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the application here, they're looking for waivers, the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven waivers from the flat submit, uh, submission checklist. And, uh, it's in our packet what they're looking for. And again, they're looking for number twelve existing and proposed orthographical contours. Now, all contours remain the same, again, this is a site plan that we've approved several times, and there's a lot on there, there's on there. So they're looking not to have to put that on there because it's on it. Number fourteen, per test, test results, the lot at Townwater Sewer. Uh, number fifteen, soil mapping types, it has the soil types on that. And so the boundaries, let's see, number twenty, final road profiles and cross-sections, again, all roads are in there, new roads. Number twenty-one, all drainage and erosion control plans, and no new construction is proposed, so everything stays the same. State subdivision, uh, septic approval, again, they're on to, uh, Townwater Sewer. And number twenty-three, state highway municipal access permit, area of accident. So.
Is there any question that we approve the waivers?
Okay, a motion by Mark to grant the waivers, seconded by, by Richard, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Okay, and let's see, address the application we've looked over, uh, or I've looked over, and assuming the rest we've looked over, and if we find anything out of order, let's hear it. If not, a motion to accept the application as complete, you'd be warranted.
Certainly.
Okay, a motion by Mark to accept the application as complete, is there a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Michael, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate the same aye, aye, all those opposed. Okay, so now we will go right to public hearing, unless someone has an objection, objection, I don't think so. So I will open up the public hearing, and Mr. Furlong may present.
Thank you. Um, my name is Bob Furlong, my wife and I own Furlong LLC. Um, and as you said, I've been in front of the board several times here in the last twenty years, it's going on twenty years here as well. Um, so what we wanna do is we wanna get two different, two lots out of this. Um, and I asked the committee to just give everything with, uh, what was called generous setbacks on from the storage units, and create two lots here. There's no new construction involved, it's just separated for the two lots. Uh, as you noted on the waivers, I have, I saw the driveway, driveway permits, I had to get one in two thousand and six, I found, but I wasn't requested, required to get one in two thousand, uh, eleven for the fifteen Business Center Drive, so there isn't for that, but I did have to get a separate one for the storage units in two thousand seventeen, where you have come in. So, and it's just as you see it, there's not gonna be any changes until plan change. Um, and I apologize for the, I agree, it's hard to find this line with the setbacks, if you find the three parallel lines in the lower right-hand corner of the lot, um, that is the subdivision.
There are any, does it point for the public eye?
Again, again, right here. These lines right here.
Yeah.
And then they don't go straight out to the road, they end just like the property, yeah, it's a storage property, okay, so we're still in.
Start with the back corner right here, I believe you'd start with this one right here, there's a, there's a pin right there, I buy that map and lot. So I can go in there and follow that pin both ways, the line both ways from there.
I can see that clearly, yeah.
Okay, yes.
Right. It took you a while to get it. Especially on that's the newest.
That's, no, that's proposed, it's gonna be that new pin right in that corner that we're talking about, it's gonna go expand out towards the keen area, and then out towards Lot thirty-two.
Okay, you're separating that from? From what?
Well, it teaches you to say that the storage units will be standing along from the entire rest of the property at the end of this. So we're gonna have one rec, basically rectangle lot and one L-shaped lot at the end.
And do you have rights away from the water in there, or?
Uh, yeah, we do have some easements that are.
They're gonna be in the new, the new lot, correct, they're gonna.
Yeah, and actually water's not a factor, there's no water in the storage units, we do have sewer, and I can get into these, are you all set for the?
You have a water line running by there though, don't you, it looks like you do anyway.
On the, oh, I sound water out on the street.
Um, no, I'm talking about right in, right here, where your corner pin is.
Right here.
Go down towards thirty-two from the corner pin to the right, and it looks like there's a, a bow there and there's a water line there, is that there or not? Is that where I'm, that's what I'm talking about right there, is that a water line right there? It comes all the way over here. It, it's not there.
No, well, it's, it's.
Okay. Cause I, yeah, you've got water on the street here, I know that's, uh.
That, that is not there.
Yeah, that's your main water there, I know it's, it's such a feeding building over here.
Yeah, then, yeah, the hydrant here.
Yeah.
And then, uh, and so that's, building was got a hydrant, it's a trench in line, it's an upriver line, it's just a, a, a.
There were, yeah, no hydrant running toward it.
Not, not that.
And there's also needing for sewer under there, right?
Yeah, there are, and they're all right out on this plant.
Okay.
Number seven, um, is the easement for all of the utilities that were run on the north side of properties, avoiding fragers, to, to the pump station.
Yeah.
And that was done prior to mine ownership. Um, number eight is an easement for a sewer line from Visi, the, uh, fifteen Business Center Drive, to the sewer main, because that cuts through the corner lot, if you go back to fifteen Business Center Drive.
Yeah.
That goes down and ties right into the sewer main going to the pump station. Um, we've got an easement to pass and repass over, but the, the line actually goes into a, what we created, uh, for tractor trailer access for five Business Center Drive to go out to back, so we both need a, a, a right to pass there, so we requested an easement there.
And that's right between the two lots, right?
Between the two lots, that's right.
Okay.
And then, uh, access to the retention pond on the west side for snow removal, because, see, we've got gates at various locations around the storage facility, and they take all the snow to that retention pond, well, most of it, not all, but, but in the back corner, um, so we need access there. And then there's a stormwater drain that also crosses from the lot at, at fifteen Business Center Drive that cuts across this corner and goes to the detention pond. And, and that was the only easement.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on the board? Pretty straightforward, and just adding a couple of lines on there, just to separate the two businesses. Anybody from the public have any comments on this? Many out there? No? Mark?
No, everything here is existing, I just.
Adam, you have any to add?
I got nothing.
Okay, I did that. Uh, hearing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. So, again, it's straightforward, let's see what they're doing there, uh, easy subdivision.
Oh, we, I got back to the provider subdivision.
Okay, a motion by Michael to approve the, uh, two lot subdivision, is there a second?
Is there a second?
Seconded by Mark, he's here. Thank you, thank Mark, is there any further discussion?
But just the one portion.
Yeah.
This common right-of-way, uh, over gravel drive. Does that encroach or does that go over wetlands?
I think it's just.
Thirty-two?
It's pretty, it's existing there now, or I'll let, I'll explain.
Yeah, uh.
Actually, it's simply where you point to. Is there, oh, this is second, I, I've gotta explain it because.
Oh, of course, yeah.
So, it's between those two pieces of property there. And so. It's, it's exist, it's there now, yeah.
Yes, but this is the new line.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're changing this lot, or, or where was the old, is that here?
Um, the old, no, the old lot line was this entire area here, so, you know, they use that to bring the trucks in and out now. So it looks like what they did was they put that lot line right down the center of, of that gravel, it doesn't go this far down, it only goes into here.
Okay, it just doesn't indicate where it comes into here.
Yeah, actually, it's not, yeah, no, you showed us a common way, but I don't really think they go that far, because it's for this.
But this is continuing all the way down.
The lot line is, that, yeah, you're right, what ends it down there, and that drive does not go down there, it does not exit onto Route thirty-two. It's just, just back in the area, three trucks back through here.
Just trying to make sure that.
Yeah, and it doesn't go across, and it won't, it doesn't, and it's not shown that.
Or allowing it down the road.
It's not even shown in the road because it just exists between the properties of a, a gravel area there.
Does that right-of-way have to be certain?
Uh, let's see, they uh, as far as the parsonage goes, no, I don't think it does, I don't know, I'm not sure, but I don't think so. Uh, we can measure how wide it is now, just to let us know how big that is, and see how big that is.
I'm not sure it's between those two lines.
It is, yeah, and each of them shares something, I think it is fifty straight. Yeah, it's good. Yeah, it looks like it between the setbacks, it's about forty feet there. I think there's more, if you get back there, it looks bigger when you drive back there, but it looks now between those, the setback lines, and you're using the property line as the center, that's at twenty feet, twenty foot setback, so you've got forty feet there. I'm putting a road in there, I mean, not driver anything, so it doesn't have to be real fifty feet. All right, you're up. And again, it's just between the two property. Okay. Anything else? Anybody? And all those in favor indicate the same aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You're all set?
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
How do you get another top still?
Great.
Thank you, very, you're here, uh, looking on a bit, hey, oh, a question on the lineup, uh, has submitted then?
Sure, you want?
Make it easier. Okay. And, uh, the top of the line, off the line, so it's time to be considered, right, considered, uh, whenever I can get a hold of it. Okay, so I submit, I do honor you, you put say, yep, to the justice plan, did that do whatever? Yes. I'll, I'll give you, uh, the. Okay, okay. Thank you.
That's up to this one here, so next on the agenda is under discussions, it's item A, the site plan modification, Environmental Alternatives Incorporated. They've got a modification to their site plan. And the board has to decide whether this is a modification, or whether we're gonna have them come in for a site plan review. So let's start over.
So, uh, Mr. Chad, I, prior to the conservation committee this week, I looked at the whole material set to them, and well, it's a framework itself. And based on what I saw in both of these modifications, uh, the question came up, um, should these also go in front of the conservation committee? I brought that to it out, and, uh, because it could have died before, um, but he said, let's not, let's pin it off here to make sure that we have our procedures correct, to consider that, and we're looking at modifications like this, I just wanted to make that point.
And it's, it's a point, not a question?
It's a, it's a point.
Okay, so.
Your comment if you want.
So, um, yeah, I would say, if the board determines that it's a little bit more than a modification, it, it'd have to come for a site plan, and I would say it would have to go before the conservation commission. But if the board determines that it's a modification, not requiring a full-blown site plan review, then, um, it wouldn't. Even though you guys can see the, the stuff there, and you're still open to comment on it anytime, you know.
So, the rest of the, the rest of the committee, I'd say, myself, I think my role here, or retention, okay, it did, could show you why that process, like we do, and one day it's be, that, that was what I explained, and really, really, really.
Okay, so. I guess you are up.
Thank you. John Doob with Gilson Lane Consultants, uh, here on behalf of the product, environmental alternatives league. So as discussed, we, we submitted for the site plan modification as part of this, but also addressed what we had for conditions of approval, or more what was discussed at the, at the plan, what was, what was approved. So we listed a summary of what those changes were, those changes were that the left building here was enlarged, so we had two buildings that were forty by eighty prior. So with the modification, we are sixty feet wide by a hundred and twenty feet wide. So the client, as they were looking at buildings to purchase and what they had for, uh, orders coming into the business, they wanted to make this building larger, uh, to accommodate that. We, we held where the, the back wall here was, the existing building, reduced the pavement in the back, so now this is the hard pack gravel in the back, to meet the setback for paving within a, a budding residential zone, so this is residential zone. We added a fence along this area, uh, basically along the retaining wall, also because that's the residential zone to provide screening. And then our parking lot prior, we had parking on both sides, but in order to keep our impervious area and everything, our footprint overall of the site exactly the same, we eliminated parking, basically, you know, we, we are, they already had more parking than they needed. So we reduce, we eliminated spaces on this side, increased spaces on this side just going to the building. So, overall, impervious is slightly less, if not the same as, as the previous plan, our stormwater is handled the same way, so we're coming to, uh, catch basins and swales out at the front, and running down to the same stormwater management system. So the biggest change is, is the layout of that larger building, but we held this, this side, we held the front edge of where it was, so we grew into the parking lot without making the larger area in the back. So those are overall the, the changes, we also added a note for, that will be no external storage besides that which is called out in the same ones. So those are the items that were addressed, when it's initially approved, unfortunately, the, the general, they, they bought it right after we, we got, we got the last time, was to increase the building size.
And there's still access to the back of that, the larger building now, I think there was access in the back of that?
Yeah, so previously we had, it was a smaller building, we had parking spaces and, and bay doors on this side. So they're thinking they'll just do one bay door, and if they need to, it would be on the hard pack gravel. Ultimately, it's for when they, they initially bring the equipment into the building, it's when they need overhead doors into the, the building.
Yeah, and they'll still have the back there.
You'll still have it on this end.
Yes, yeah. So the plan's still to put one building up and.
Yeah, so he's, he's purchased this building, and, and this September this will arrive, and then they'll build this building there.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, the question.
I was just gonna say, did we, or did you show us where the, uh, storage was gonna be, external storage was going to be, um, to the back here?
So on, on previous plans, and same with this, we're not showing any external storage or anything, it'll be noted on the plan, that there won't be any external storage, you know, like you know it is, there's a, a duster to the rear here.
Yeah. Uh, that's nice, yeah.
So that was the only outdoor storage.
I just couldn't recall whether or not there was temporary storage.
Yeah, there wasn't supposed to be any storage, that I recall, but outside, and, yeah, that was the, the idea of the building, is everything is inside, and they take all that stuff apart and sort it out.
So still waiting to have the overhead doors to the backside on the brush block, is it brush block or?
It'd be hard patch stone, so it's a mixture of, uh, crushed gravel and then, uh, sown us, so it'll see like the gray, it'll be. Blocking for driveways.
So pretty much what they're doing is they're expanding, expanding the size of that building a little more than doubling, actually, about that building, at seventy-two hundred, I think, now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, modifying the parking, whether there's a head plane parking, right, so we need to decide whether doing that alters the site plan enough to make them come in for site plan, full blown site plan, or whether it's a modification of site plan, so we have to decide.
I'm sorry, that memory's not serving me very well, it's, was there going to be hard, uh, hard top or a black top to the back here initially?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we've got a situation where we're gonna have seepage leaching in the back where we did it before, into that wetland, that's behind.
Oh, what do you mean there? We're talking about, didn't eat the setback, the pavement.
There, there was a condition of approval to change that to gravel, uh, so they, so at, during the last approval, one of the conditions of approval was to change that to, to gravel.
Correct, yes, and that's what it is now.
Right, so I think the only thing that would be out here, potential concern, would be the dumpster, and we still have that on the paved edge in this back, so we wanted to keep that paved so that, A, it doesn't, for picking up and emptying the dumpster, it doesn't, uh, it has a hard surface. Uh, the dumpster itself is on a concrete pad with a fence to closure, uh, so it was basically just this extra width that they wanted for bringing trucks into the end bay before. So now that was based on the condition of approval, changed to, to gravel, and instead of following exactly twenty-five feet of this rear line, we just made a straight line across. And then we also, previously, we did drain some of our stormwater to, to that direction, had catch basins back there, and we reversed grading to drain, before we were draining everything back here and, and taking it to a swell behind here, so we stopped, we were pitching just the gravel, and the pavement is now pitching and going to a catch basin, coming to the front, go this way, so that we're not sending anything just into this impervious area. And just the water runoff would be only what's on that gravel, all of our paved surfaces are directed to the front to treat that swell down here.
Yes, what, what I'm getting at is, that crushed gravel will allow leaching into the grounds there.
It's considered impervious, the gravel. Yeah, it's all intense purpose, and when, when we decide how much impervious surface there is on a flat gravel, kind of impervious surfaces that we go on. And it's not, you know, yeah, I suppose something could leach down there, but, uh, it's considered wrong, or something like that, but you're thinking something's gonna leach down through it, but like, oh.
No, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that, you know, gravel, you could leach through gravel, I don't care what you.
No, you can, you can.
I, I agree, you know, and I, and listening to, uh, what the conservation's commission is, uh, trying to point out, I think that this concern, is that is very wet all around that place, in fact, there used to be, and I don't know if it still is, a small pond, just, just down from this, this, uh, proposal.
So, okay, just use your chat. Cause, you know, Richard's bringing up his, his important, uh, so Wilson Pond is, you know, somewhere up here.
Right, it's Wilson Pond, right.
Wilson Pond goes and then turns and goes up. And there's a stream that crosses that road, just a little bit out to that bend, and that stream actually pulls water from here. Our pond testing, that is the worst spot, you got a lot of phosphates in there, uh, it's also fed from a stream coming down, it kind of eats up like this.
Okay.
Uh, crosses the way in the other spot, then eats up like this, this water goes into the pond, we actually test where this one crosses over the road.
Okay.
And for.
Mark, where you were, uh, the intersection of Saffron and Wilson Pond Road, if you go in about maybe fifty feet.
Sorry.
From that, from that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
There's a, there is a pond, a little pond in there.
Okay.
Or has, had, I don't know if it's been filled, but I mean, it was there.
Like the burrow spot.
Yeah, like a good number of years.
Gets wider.
And I know there's a pond further across too.
Yeah, no, but there's, there's one right down close to, uh, the intersection there.
So, the part of the condition of approval last time was that that be gravel out back there, and it is now, so that is nothing that they're changing, they're modifying. They're changing the size of the building, the gravel was there from our last approval, so, and the pond was still there, we want to get approved the last time, and all that stuff is the same, sorry, the building sizes change. And we're deciding whether that's a modification, whether the size of that building is enough to trigger a full-blown site plan review, or it's a modification of the existing site plan. And, and.
I would say it's a modification because it's not approaching the, to his setbacks, right, it's more like that.
It's, it's fitting on there fine, right, it fits on there fine, and, uh, the parking is fine, they have enough parking spaces on that, and so, I would have to say, I would have to agree that it's a modification, but we'll see what the board says, we have to decide on that first, before we can approve or not approve a modification. So. Motion, you know.
My move that that's a modification.
Okay, uh, motion by Michael York, that the site plan modification, is there a second? I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate the same aye, aye. Uh, let's poll, and if you're, okay. Uh, I'll start, Mark, Mark, yes or no?
I wish it was yes or no.
Okay.
I know it's not a perfect, but the point was made, and if this could become more truly impervious surface as a condition, then I think it would be a modification and an approval.
Okay, yes or no, cause the motion is.
So I'm gonna take it.
Okay, no, Jane.
Well, I have a question.
Does it always happen?
You're making it larger, why?
Does it matter?
Well, maybe it doesn't, but it matters to me, I'd like to know.
Probably, they need more space, don't they?
Yeah, so when they, when they. Yeah, so when they, when they went to order their building, they, and they were looking at how much square foot does they have for how much material they have coming into orders, and so they, they're doing government, uh, contracts. So they realized that initially they're gonna have a lot more than they anticipated initially. So they wanted to make that building as basic one as big as they could. And they said, you know, we'll keep phase two, the size it is now, but potentially that gets smaller if they needed to in the future. Uh, thinking that phase two would be offices, but, uh, yeah.
I don't know if I can call on your members, we're in the middle of a vote here. Is, is it imperative that you, you tell us?
I just, the previous approval, that whole area, Mark, the whole gravel now, whether it used to be paved, the whole area is already approved.
Yep.
So I'm just commenting on it, I mean, it's, yeah.
Thank you.
It's all right.
Okay, it's an approval, right, we aren't, we aren't deciding anything on that gravel part, but all we're deciding on is the size of that building. Uh, Mark is a no, Jane, you?
Yes.
I'm a yes?
Yes.
No, Richard? No? Yes? Yes? Okay, there are two no's and one, two, three, four yeses. So it is determined that it's a site plan modification. Now, about the site, go ahead. You have some?
No, that's all right.
Okay, now we're talking about the actual modifications to see if, uh, there's anything that the planning board actually. Other than the gravel, because the gravel is already approved by us.
Right, and the back corner of the pavement needs to fit to put setback now, correct?
Correct, yeah, so we initially had that all paved, but he, he took it out based on, and the fence was a condition, uh, showed the fence on there, that was a change. Right, so, right, we have the fence along this backside, because this is residential, this is the commercial zone, so industrial park zone. So we've done the fence along here and then we took out, because this is a corner, it would make a weird jogs, and we just did a straight line across here and perfectly went to the building to make that all gravel, because that was the condition.
Any other questions about this modification? If not, motion would be in order.
The current issue you want?
A motion to approve the site plan modification.
I made that motion.
Motion by Michael York to approve the site plan modification, is there a second? I'll second it. Second by Stacy, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye, aye. All opposed? Okay, and you have your modifications for that, and you're here for the next one, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Did you ask them to consider paving here?
Next item is another site plan modification, and that is Asher Construction, limited by the, uh, contract of bay. And what are we doing here? You guys are going up there?
Yep. So again, for the record, John, Fieldstone Land Consultants, uh, the site plan modification is for an additional gravel parking area over on this end. So we have, group twelve is here, Safford Drive loops around, Clearwater Pools is right here. And there's sand and gravels that are in this area, so he would like his additional parking, uh, for the contractor bays. And he's looking to, to cross this wetland here and expand a gravel parking lot here. And so where our previously approved site plan was these three buildings and parking lot on this side. And now he's looking to basically make this almost the same level, so come across with a, with a gravel driveway. We would put a culvert in at this crossing with the wetland. Um, so what's outlined in, in blue here is the wetlands that start here at the fairgrounds and then, and then ultimately go down behind a page sheet here in Safford Drive. Um, so it's, it's ultimately for this piece. As a forward point, remember, we kind of went back and forth with this either being a boundary line adjustment with Clearwater taking it over or, uh, so it was a back and forth and ultimately they did not want to, to purchase this piece. So now he's, he's looking to, Asher Construction, our client is looking to, since he's gonna maintain ownership of this, is to access it to utilize for, uh, more storage, hoping that it, for the contractor bays, bays makes it more appealing that someone could rent one of those bays if they have areas they can turn a trailer around or, you know.
So the, uh, the purpose of it is for what? For, for?
Additional parking or, you know, use of the contractor bays.
Because it is gonna end up for storage and that type of stuff, then, uh, it's probably, I think, a little more than a modification of the site plan because then you've got things stored out there, we don't know what it is, and, uh, not pretty just general parking. Got your general parking around those buildings, but that's just me, so that's what it is, a gravel parking area for future use.
Yeah, and he's excited to get the materials out of there because it's nice sand and gravel, so he's looking to sell these sand and gravels, um.
Well, he can still take the materials.
Take them in and out and bounce for the site plan, that's.
He can still take materials out of that.
Yeah, but he, he wants to have it as a, cross the wetland, have a permanent crossing with that, or gravel.
Yeah, right, yeah, is that, I'm trying to think of your wetlands, is that a, uh, not a variance, but it's, that's.
So we already went to zoning board for that cost.
Oh, you didn't get that? Was that before the zoning went in? Is that what, you did that, or you've done that?
We've done that since.
Central guys, and you got that?
Yeah.
That was a variance you got then? Must have been.
Yeah, it was in, uh, January, I got it.
Yeah, so it's like immediately, right, when they, you have to cross that.
Well, what do you think?
Board members.
Site plan modification, no, it shouldn't be. I don't have a problem with the parking area there, but.
I'm afraid it's definitely still.
Those things just tend to, you know, get stuff on there and just sits there and whatever, you know. I, I can see the contractor guys, you know, they're gonna be parked out here and they got their stuff stored inside the building, but.
Are they gonna store it outside?
Yeah, you, you don't know, so. What do you think, is it a modification? Yes, no?
I'm sorry, what are we discussing, whether it's gonna be a modification or?
A modification or, or come back in for a site plan for it.
I'm more in the site plan, because I'm, I'm concerned about going, uh, the wetlands, you say you've got a variance from the selectmen? Yeah, I'm worried.
Did you see a?
No, from the zoning board.
Yeah. So they can cross that out, but again, it's the use of it is what we're talking about, and you're saying that you think it should be site planned, okay. I think I agree with you on that just because of the storage area and not necessarily parking for those buildings.
Yeah, what I, what I see from the storage is like what, just what's being, or what's occurring up at Burge Run, uh, office and earlier. They've got three containers sitting out to the backside of that lot, and what it is, it's a warehouse. It's a warehouse, it's not being taxed because it's, and it contains, you know, it's, it's kind of cutting the, the town out of some revenue, but I, I'd be concerned about then putting that type of, uh, items sitting back there.
Yeah, we are concerned about the storage, we are.
Well, we there need a motion then that it is a site plan modification? Or we need a motion that says they need to come back for a site plan review?
Motion to have them come back for a site plan review.
Motion by Richard to have them come in for a site plan review, seconded by Mark, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, 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 all opposed? This is a little more than, than a modification, so they'll have to be back.
And also, another thing that I noticed when you initial, um, plan came in, you just did not have any parking showing between these two buildings, and you now have parking in there. That's something that you've added since, and I'm, what I'm trying to do is.
No, this was here, because I, I remember we had to change where, and label the ADA spaces on this.
Would you like to look at what, what was included and put, uh, presented to us?
Yeah, so, but.
Is that what we ended up with finally? We have to see.
There's no, no parking in between those buildings.
So I think we did discuss that one time.
There's the parking.
Yeah.
No, there's no parking in there.
I'm pretty sure it was in there. Your.
Initially, just like, that's your idea.
Well, this, when you come back in, there's new site plan, you just gotta put it in.
Yeah, but it wa, it was there, I think, I don't know where you prove, we'll have to see the one on the side, yeah.
Yeah, it's what, right, I remember we had to, we modified an ADA space and called out a sign as one of the condition. I know these spaces were there before.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I never, I'm pretty sure we discussed that during the meeting, but we can check with the.
Okay, and if they come back with the park, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
I was just saying, if they come back with the, the plat, the way we were asking for parking, are they going to need to do landscaping in there also?
In that area, they probably will, yeah, if there's a site plan, that, that, have that line taken. And, and really, pretty much what the use is gonna be, you know, it's gonna be stored out there, and whether it's gonna be vehicles or materials or lumber or, or, yeah. That too, yeah. And the surface is gonna be gravel by the sound of it, but that too.
At that point, we can put conditions on it?
It's gonna be a site, if they come in, it'll be a site plan, and if the planning board has conditions to put on it, then we can hash it out then, not now.
Okay, no, I'm, all right, I have someone who, who, you got that someone?
Okay. Okay, and that brings us to the end. Does anyone have anything else?
Uh, I do have a long topic.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
I'm gonna go ahead and, uh.
Before you say, I, I wanna like get the, get some of these exactly, let the opposite.
Uh, it'll be on, uh, Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Kristen is, is in after, uh, her position, she looks like, uh, for help. Uh, and I, I do have an email from her, I believe the email is not, it's probably, uh, for the resignation. And he printed out, um, but, I think.
Is she concerned that it's not fair to us, or she just needs it some, or you don't know?
Uh, she just, she just wants to focus on recovery and, you know, buy lethal commitment.
Yeah.
Um, and because, you know, it's gone on since a year ago, uh, I, you know, obviously completely support and just hope, and hope so that it helps me, um, you know, I'm sure you guys are more willing to reach out if you want.
Well, yeah, Kristen and I have been good friends, and she had to scale back something that she does, because she does a lot. So ran down, she says, well, I can't be here a lot of times, so it would not be fair to you guys. So I have talked to her since then to say, I don't know what the sense of the board is, because I'm concerned if you missed a few meetings, it wouldn't bother me at all. But that's up to the board on this side.
Yes, so she's just decided to sit down with my team. Um, I told her, you know.
It's also hard to find volunteers, but.
Right, and when, once she gets out there, I'll come back and, you know, if we have another meeting, then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can understand because it's just one thing off her mind that she doesn't ever think about.
I would do the same here, you know.
Me, her, her mind.
She's, she has a lot more.
Yes, yes. Will the, the board want to vote whether we accept her resignation or not?
Will we do that?
No, she submitted a letter, so the board should do that efficiently.
A motion to accept her resignation.
Notion by Mark that we accept reg, uh, her resignation letter, seconded by Jane, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye.
Reluctantly, most.
Reluctantly, okay.
Reluctantly, please reach out, it's the best wishes.
I don't have any discussions with her.
Yeah.
I thought it was that lifelong duty.
Oh.
You guys scared her away, man.
Uh-huh, surprise you, Chris hasn't been scared by such a thing. If I, if any of you guys know anybody who's interested, please, uh, send an email, I will try to reach out. Um, I know we haven't done any Swansea uncovered, uh, we've been without any, um, an administrative assistant at Town Hall. Uh, that role usually does the Swansea cover, it's where we really put the ads and work for this person. But I might pose something, I'd say a little bit for an alternate planning board. Um, I like to keep planning board, I'm gonna work with staff possible, so, um, you know, everyone can sort of put the word out, really, if you're interested, we'll take it. Yeah, that's all, that's all I got, and I, I am still working with Cordell on, uh, language. Uh, so the next item that I have printed off for you guys is the wetlands. So I, I organized it where each cell or table is a study, so if you guys are looking at that, stop, do you have a topic?
I do, you just, I just picked it up off the table, are we at this? We're talking on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, oh, I have bad eyes, yeah, that's it. Um, so I tried to organize it in a, in a good way to, for easy editing, uh, the paper notes.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
It'll be really easy for us to go back through it at our next meeting and really just diligently work our way through that list.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and by the time we have our next meeting, I should be back with Cordell. I'm trying to get a face to face with Cordell, um, because I, an email doesn't really, it's hard to put all this in an email.
Yeah.
So.
First, we just go back and forth.
Exactly, I, I will, you know, I, I, I will let you guys know, uh, I think it might be beneficial maybe to have a review for that. What do you, what do you guys think?
Well, I think we're gonna maybe have another meeting and render it down more before it went to, to the attorney.
Which is fine, I, I'm supportive of that. Uh, so if we, if we want, uh, to maybe pitch some joint meeting ideas?
So, so the conservation committee, they decided was, it was gonna go back to the subcommittee that worked on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that they were doing it forward for conservation committees.
Uh-huh.
Um, and then they were thinking that they would present that to the selectmen, that's their feedback and input, and then have a joint meeting. So hopefully, the hopes that.
All right, so it might be a little while then.
With the hope that last joint meeting, we really hammered it out.
Yeah.
I would just make a suggestion to not, this language has already been passed through a joint meeting one time, so nothing, I, I would say nothing substantially. I, I wouldn't do a full rewrite or anything, uh, but order, I think everybody needs to say pretty much how it is, because.
Oh, then maybe.
I think there was a lot of discussion about what might go into a site plan review, this and that.
Yeah, right.
And, I mean, there wasn't much discussion at Monday's meeting.
Mm-hmm.
But it was determined that the regulation itself needs to read and be complete, even if it makes reference that this will be done in the site plan review. You know, you, you can't like take a part out of it, so we put it, you know, in the site plan review where it might be wrong functionally. It still needs to be part of that regulation, so they're, they're grappling with that, and that's what the subcommittee worked through.
Yeah.
Maybe, obviously, if you, no idea if we, you know, reach out to Sherry, um, but I'm not directly involved, I just, you know, what was discussed briefly. It was really about a two, two little conversation.
So maybe after it gets rendered down again, that's the time to go to the selectmen with it. You know, after the planning board's done rendering it down somehow more and conservation commission also, and then present the selectmen with the final or supposed final, it wouldn't be the final until after public hearing.
Right, so that would be going to the spark one twice, and then we.
Just once, really, yeah, just once after, you know, the planning board, we could put on our next agenda how busy we are, our next meeting there.
I haven't even had a message.
But the planning board itself, we can, because you guys or conservation commissioners discussing it amongst themselves, planning board can discuss it amongst themselves, and then maybe have another joint meeting, so how about the next meeting, we discuss that, if anybody's changes or stuff?
Anything else we're open next week, you're sorry?
I was gonna ask you a question about, about one of that, but one of these, but you want to do it next meeting?
Yeah, let's, let's, because I haven't read this over yet, so, you know, we'll all have comments in the little note section like that, and so we can get together again and, and render it down a little bit more. And, uh, conservation commission may be doing the same thing, and then we can get together and maybe put together a bit and, uh, get it a little bit ready for the attorney.
We're impressed how, though, we're ready to how prepared we were.
Well, thank you. Kind of buttered me up for that.
No, I.
Making a motion.
I agree with us.
Okay, Richard made a motion to adjourn, sorry. Good, I'm ready. Seconded by Michael, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, 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 opposed, and we are adjourned.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.